The thing that bothers me the most is there's no jumping in a car and driving. No, there's jumping in a car and driving.
On the island.
Yeah, make it lose it. That would drive me crazy not being able to leave.
Yeah, once you're there, you're convinced.
Yeah, you're there. You're there.
It's like language. It came up just a bigger island.
Nelson over there, man.
Nelson, Nelson's here.
I'm stolen, stolen, okay? You know in broadcasting this is where you stretch, stretch, just another thirty seconds. I'm good, go.
Hold on. And you can call me if you need order. We'll start with that. Start with Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll be rolling.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mayor Menney.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Glanzer.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
Do you motion to approve the agenda?
So vote. Second. Discussion. On paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you motion for meeting minutes from February eighteen twenty five?
I've been to motion to approve the meeting minutes from February.
Second. Discussion.
On paper.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Obstain.
Obstain? That was abstaining.
Yeah.
For the Walberg?
Yeah. Monahan and Brenneman.
Yep. And the will submitted for payment. So, next section on the agenda is public comments. And I had a public comment I want to make, but I also have to open it up to the media and audience here first. Basically, three public comments on non agenda items. Okay, you're done. One of the items on our last agenda was to review the proposal from Hartford Air Sports and Rec. And take a look at the com- or take a look at the vendor that they were going to work with as far as being able to do some naming rights and do some fundraising, some partnership type things out there. The way that was left is to say, hey, come on back with a competing organization so we got somebody else to compare to and then add a copy of the contract. So, since then, I just wanted to kind of give an update on where we're at on that. Since then, Jones and I met with a couple of different members from Sports and Rec that later that week. Actually, it was between, anyway, it doesn't matter. We met since the last meeting with them. They haven't been able to find a competing organization yet, so they're still working on that piece of it. We talked through some of the logistics with them and said that before we bring that in front of the council again, we wanted to really vet that contract and really take a look at it, make sure that it's a company and an organization that we're feeling good about going forward with. And most likely get that contract in front of our attorney, because the way it looks to me is it would be something that we would probably be signing off on, not necessarily the organization. So, just wanted to make sure we're vetting it correctly and doing all the right steps for that. So, our plan is, is to meet with them again this Thursday and see where we're at on a couple of those hanging items before we get back on the agenda. So, Jones, is there a plan meeting?
Yeah. We are branching this out and inviting a couple of other people. They are from their group and we are from the city.
H D F.
Yeah, and from H D F to have, to broaden that discussion some before we move forward. They did have a contract, I would agree with the mayor. I do think there's some things we should look at before that would be executed by the city. Because it would be with us, not necessarily with the Sports and Rec. That's, yeah. So, but, yeah, I think we had a relatively productive meeting with them, I should say that.
All right. Any other public comments? All right, then we'll go over to visitors. Deena Larson, Alexa Larson. And I don't know everybody's name, but we've got an update on dog park requests.
Mayor and city council members, we're pleased to be back again to talk about the dog park tonight. And really, it's to kind of get your input on what potential next steps you feel might be appropriate here. Before we do that, though, I'm going to have the girls share some community information that they've obtained through a survey that they did, so we'll share that with you and then just open it up for a short dialogue. So we don't plan to be here long and look forward to your input. I should introduce them late, so my daughter, Alexa Larson, and my second troop member and only other troop member, Rachel Lorance, so we're treating the two now.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they can't see their nose. You got it all memorized? Oh, they had it memorized, yeah.
You can have it.
So, this project, the girl, oh my gosh, the goal to work project, we decided we wanted to do something that involved a dog park, which would be a community need, and part of the project is getting community input. So we thought the best way to do that would be through a survey. And we had ninety more people complete the survey in December.
The results of the survey resulted in like a strong majority of park for support dog, support dog park. Ninety-one people said that they would and we only had three people that would oppose.
A question on the survey involved how many people use the park daily, weekly, monthly? And the average was that they'd use it a couple of times a week and a couple of times a month. A few said daily and a few also said a few times a year.
And the biggest concerns that they showed on the survey were none with thirty-two people. Availability, like what I mean, people there with twenty-two people saying that, and the cleanliness of the dog park with twenty people.
There was also a question on the survey that involved volunteering and seventeen people said they were interested in volunteering. And they also, there was a section on the survey that involved them sending down input. And if we did come back with a proposal, we'd present the input that the surveys gave us.
But, just, you know, say now, some comments were like they were willing to help build it and they were like, oh yeah, Sioux Falls parks are getting a little crowded, so this would be a good thing. And will this be big enough considering that it is a town, it's going to be big enough for all the dogs? And they were happy that there'd be a place for people to socialize and if there's going to be a separate place for large dogs and another for small dogs.
Okay, thank you, girls. So with that, they kind of gave you a high level recap of what they heard from the community in December at Hartford from Christmas, and we just want to hear from you what you think might be the next step in terms of the potential dog park here in Hartford.
I have a question that I, in regards, I wish the question would have been up there. With individuals, young or old, with disabilities that don't have the ability to walk their dog. Have you had any feedback on that? I mean, have you had anybody that might want to expand on that circumstance? They might be living today. If not, I totally understand.
This is just really to get input on whether we feel we need one, so we didn't get that in depth on, you know, potential use or potential other needs of people with disabilities within the community. But that's certainly something that the girls could follow up on.
I like that, it'd be good.
Well, you know.
Elderly, elderly also.
I mean, they've been working on this for a couple of years and there was a committee that had the meeting and we did talk about potentially having some kind of workshops for people, you know, special things for dog obedience and additional side things that could help people get trained on how to use the park, appropriate use of the park and those kinds of things. So, you know, it's limitless on what we can do with the dog park, but you know, you have to start somewhere.
So if I understand you correctly, if Mark Monahan got another horse like he has in his backyard and he wants to train this horse to, also known as a dog, to be a little more.
You know we had to put him down last year, right?
No. God, you told me that. Oh, man. Okay, well, people are big dogs, but isn't that. Go on, let's keep talking.
Talking about large dogs.
I should digress, huh? All right, so is it possible that with said dog park, that, that a lot of, well, everybody, you know, outside of our place kennel, if they want to train their dog themselves, is the mindset to possibly be able to to have an obedience course in said dog park so that, you know, we can start from the ground up with puppies? If not, I totally understand, I'm just trying to lead you along here because I'm behind you a hundred percent and you know that.
I think our main part is getting the park and letting people use it. And if people need to like find obedience for their dog, I think there's multiple places in Hartford already for it.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. Is it common to segregate big dogs and little dogs? That's common.
Yeah, that's very common.
Yeah, and the other, the Ellis Dog Park and the Spencer one that we went and we observed, there was a difference because there's also like small dogs could, they're really small and big dogs, they could get aggressive if there were a fight, that could happen, because we have to think about the possibilities. And the small dog would be in a very big space.
So, speaking of dog fights, how does the liability, and this might not be a question for you girls, but how does the liability with, with city property and dog attacks or dog bites from a liability standpoint?
I can answer that, at least for the cities to follow. We didn't check into that. We did check into that when we were working on the dog waste stations a couple of years ago and it falls under the city's liability policy, we can sure follow up with them and they were glad to come out and talk to us about it.
So the city has a liability, the city of St. Paul's has a liability policy to cover dog.
It's under their umbrella policy.
See, and do we have one?
Yeah. Remember when we talked about this a few years ago? That was one of the things you guys had to check into. It would fall under our general liability policy. We'd want to post rules and regulations at the park that they need to follow, just kind of so some of the liability falls off us, but we're ultimately liable for the, it'll come over on a blanket liability policy.
Similar if you want to get your dog through the current city park.
Yeah, exactly, if they got attacked in the current city park, yeah.
And it may fall more on the owner. I mean, ultimately, they're responsible to control their pet.
Yeah.
Right.
So cleanup, is that typically the dog owner's responsibility?
Yes, in our last summer work project, we did do the project with the pet waste stations, which would also be included in the park. And usually people do clean up their dog's waste, but some people don't and I guess that's just what people do. And there would be like rules, and if they don't follow them, I guess I'm done.
And there were actually people when they did the survey in December who wrote that they would help clean up the park too, but I don't think we'd want to set that as a necessary practice.
Right.
Shouldn't have to pick up after other people's dogs, right?
So just one question, did you only give that survey to dog owners? That was pretty lopsided.
Yeah, that was most of the people who said never is because either their dog had died recently or they didn't own a dog.
Actually, a lot of the people weren't actually like dog people and a lot were like, well, why should I do the survey if I have a cat? But they like still did it anyway.
But like. And some lived in the country, so that's what they said they'd never use it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Sure. I'm sorry, how was the, how was the survey distributed again? I should know this by camera.
So we hosted a booth at the Hartford Hometown Christmas like crafts convention.
Yeah.
And then we just kind of asked them, yeah.
Like, hey, did you do this? And they go like, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. I think it was one of those.
Next, you know, the thing that comes to my mind most is do you have a, do you have a recommendation for size, place, anything like that? And if someone across the right piece of land, I think, is, I would want to.
What we would like to see as the next step is to ask engineers for a recommendation and proposal. And I know Jesse had some initial conversations with them. And, you know, we had met with this committee over the last couple of years and looked at a number of places within the city, but we kind of think it would be best, since the engineers, that's what they do, you know, specialize in helping cities with the placement of dog parks, et cetera, ask for what their recommendation would be in our community.
I think we might have one.
We've been talking to Jesse about that. I mean, went with Craig and Jesse and kind of spotted a couple of spots that would work. And we did, and our company did do the Spencer Park, Dog Park.
We just didn't want to talk about that tonight because we know it can be controversial, so we'd rather come back with a proposal.
Oh, that'd be great.
Forever.
Yeah.
Any other questions for us?
So is the same building common?
Yeah, come on, not so because they'll want to get your name in for the minute.
I didn't do your survey. I don't have a problem with dog parks, but hear me out.
Make sure that Karen has your name for the, for the minutes, though.
I, that's Kyber Taylor, I live at one eleven South Fandom Ark. At the end of Fandom Ark and Red Bull. I wasn't talking to Jesse because this is a concern where you locate this park. He indicated that their kind of prime spot would be right outside my front window. There's a big tree there, your water supply is there, whatever. I have a problem with the location and if you're going to consider your members of the community, I think I should be heard about that, because you're putting a fence two hundred feet from my front window. I have two dogs, large dogs, they will never use this park, but then I don't like to say I don't have a problem. I'm not taking my dogs to any dog park. One suffers from seizures and the other one has just been put on meds for, what do I want to say, anxiety. So all I need to do right now is to stick running dogs in front of my front window where I already have a problem with loose dogs running over there, people let them off leash and they throw balls over there, right in that spot you're talking about. I probably won't have any woodwork left on the inside my front window. I wouldn't either. So, you really need to, I know I'm the only one on that road, I know that. But if you look at the parks that are in Sioux Falls, there are no houses around there. They're well within the city parks. I've looked at pictures online, I have not visited anybody, I've talked to some of them that use them at work. I've asked them, are there houses like two hundred feet from there, their backyards, but no. It's all woods or it's trees or whatever, they're great, okay, fine, thanks. So I really encourage you to please not put it there. I am begging of you, do not do that. I have a six foot fence around my yard for a reason. I don't need to taunt my dogs with activity over there. I have enough trouble with walkers, but I understand because I use the path myself. I walk my dogs for exercise. So, we just deal with that. But I don't want to deliberately stick a dog park outside my front window, not a good thing.
So, I appreciate your input.
I just want to, before you get too far with your plans on location, you really need to consider because that makes my life real difficult with the dogs, especially ones starting on anxiety meds. I won't have it under control, she's new to my house. I've only had her four months and suddenly this past week, I've had carpet tore up, I've had door frames come off. Yeah, it was a nightmare. I checked her out medically and find out whether it was a medical and it's not, she's just schizo. So, I just don't need any more problems with putting a dog park over there. And my large dog, the thing about the small dog, large dog thing, it is a thing. I also read in the A K C guidelines about dog park parks, you should have at least an acre of land. It also talks about having water and shelter. I don't know why people don't bring their own water, but whatever. It also does talk about having enough space to have small dogs here, large dogs here. And I can totally agree with that. My dogs are large and they hate fluffy things. It's like really bad, to where people see my dogs approaching and I try to keep them under control, but they will carry their dogs past mine because they're afraid. And I do the best I can to keep them under control, but I could never put them in a space for a small dog. Never, so.
Before we get too far on this, I want to make, I just want to be clear, we're not looking at a proposal tonight, but I appreciate your input into the.
I understand that, when I wanted to catch this, because I talked to Jesse about it, I had heard Wind about it last fall, hadn't heard any other mentions. I didn't get a survey, but I was in that Hometown Christmas. I love dogs. I would, I clean up my own dog poop, so I'm not cleaning up anybody else's. But, I mean, geez, I, my whole life is dogs, so I don't have a problem with your dog park. And I'm, girls did a wonderful job in your presentation, great, but just not for my house, please. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
And I'm just going to, I know we're going to shut this down real quickly, and Deb's defense, Ward three representative. I one hundred percent can relate to where you're talking about a dog anxiety. I have a fostered pit bull that was fostered six years ago and still is there, don't know how that happened. And, and then I can relate to the tune, the interior damage that can happen. And I would say that I would not endorse putting a, a dog park in an area where something like that could happen because I've seen firsthand, I have some sheet rock I got to replace, as a matter of fact, becomes of that exact circumstance. So, so, so that's something to be cognizant in the future.
I agree completely, I'm passionate, Nelson would be in the window barking the entire day. I would be like, if you put a dog park across from Scott Nelson's house that you know his dogs, I mean, it would be a bad deal.
Not my dog, my wife's dog.
It would just be a bad deal, that close to people's personal property where their dogs can be.
Yeah, I agree.
Just back it off, that's all.
Really nice presentation, thank you very much for the survey. Any other questions for Deena or the girls? Logan?
You bet.
Me too, thanks for bringing that up.
So we have a privilege to look forward to the engineers to come back for the proposal.
Aye, you know, you guys were talking about this a little bit, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we've identified a couple of spots like that. I know Jesse was talking about maybe a pop-up park that was just to try it in there, just a timber fencing and whatnot in the community area. That's the extent that we've been working on.
He talking snow fencing type stuff?
Yeah, I think that's what they were thinking, just to try it in the location. But the one thing, because to go, one thing is the one location that we're looking at, particular location had water available. The other location doesn't have water available and require the utility extension.
Right.
But I know, I feel like he was considering more of a pop-ups, it's just to test how successful it might be.
The last I talked to him, he thought we should just try to go forward with a full proposal.
Okay.
And I guess, I guess what I'm thinking on this is I would like to have, I would like to probably meet with Craig and, you know, Mitch and if Jesse's available in this next month yet, possibly, we'll just kind of see. But before we spend engineering money on it, I'd really like to nail down, just, just doing a walk around and kicking some areas and looking at it, you know what I mean?
We've been doing that for two years, so.
Sure.
I know exactly where it needs to go.
All right.
Dean wants to be this where, it's, I think that would improve where I want it.
Okay, well, should we talk outside of the meeting?
Sure.
And just kind of talk a little bit about a couple of different locations and then, yeah.
Okay.
At that point, we'd be able to move forward on, on, on the engineering.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lorance and Ms. Larson.
All right, listen, we've got a hearing, pass seven oh five, we've got a seven oh five rezone hearing. And first reading word at six eighty-four for the Jardine Development. Teresa, I'll follow what you took this one.
Yeah, so, no, so in your packet, there's a rezone application submitted by Jardine Development. And this is for the property that would just speak to the east of the two cul-de-sacs along Mickelson Road. When that property was drawn into the city annexed in, the, of course, the cul-de-sacs were zone residential, but then they originally zoned this area as commercial because they weren't sure at that time what it was actually going to be. And they thought, we'll zone it commercial and in case they, something does go in this commercial, it's easier to zone down versus up. They have since decided that they want to go with residential. They plan to do three single family home lots in their, in that property. So this hearing is basically for them to ask to rezone it from community commercial, which it is now, to residential. P and Z reviewed it at their meeting last week and their recommendation is approval for the council.
Second.
Second discussion?
What's the plan, what's the plan for the, for the street? Over the east side?
The street is built to.
The street's there to the end of the.
We did it with the Mickelson project. Yeah, so they have hard surface and street all there along it.
You know what, Tony? I don't get on that side of the tracks much, all right? All right, I know my place, calm down. I forgot we did put it into the, disregard my question. Now you, you don't disregard my time.
And they, and they do have stuff outs all along there too, we put that in with the project, so they are ready for building.
Will they be addressed all on that east street? Or one to the south and two to the east? Do you have any idea how those three lots will lay out in there?
They'd have to, because I don't, they'd go to the east, yeah, they'd come out to the east.
They'll have to come out to the Colton Road.
Yeah, my only concern is the driveway, I don't make a sense.
Yeah.
What is it, is that, is that road actually called Colton Road? Is that what that road will be called?
That's what, that's what we think we're going to call it, because we never really called it anything when we decided that right away, but we've been talking today about it. John Jardine brought up, says, what's it going to be called? Well, question.
So the game plan is to build that through, I mean, we talked about that years ago.
Right.
You know, I don't know the protocol on naming streets per se, but is it going to be too premature to do that now? Because it's going to extend to railroad at some point in time.
We kind of looked at it as like some highways on the offset, they'll come and then they'll join another highway from Island and then take off, go another direction, that's about what this is. Because going to the south of that intersection that is Colton Road, that address that, the farms up there, they are.
It is.
So, so Kami already calls that Colton Road all the way down to that house that's on the south side. So, I think we just need to extend it up to Colton.
So be it Colton Road, okay.
All right, we have a question. Then we've got a motion and a second, we'll vote. Glanzer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I would just, just as a, just a second, I'd like to thank the council for Nicholson Road project. You guys went out big on that. And that has just made a great improvement for us, for our development. We've got a lot of activity. We're gonna have half dozen houses rolling up already and finish it out. So, I appreciate it. It's paying off for, for all, so, thank you.
Thank you. Three, Jim, what do you have left? How many lots you got?
Uh, we'll be down to four in phase four, and one left, you have a phase three.
Okay.
Rock bottom deal on that one.
Rock?
There you go.
He's selling.
No, it's been great. Thank you for sticking next up, but I know it was a big project.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
There's land available on the other side, you know.
Yeah. I never know.
All right, next slide, we got a resolution twenty twenty dash two, uh, South Dakota DOT's.
So, this resolution, um, we've basically found out about a week ago that the state is classifying basically all our culverts within town as bridges now. Um, used to be just western. Now, I think with the recent, last year's flooding and whatnot, they're saying basically any culvert over twenty feet long of that current creek, uh, is now constituted a bridge. So, that would include Main, Fighter, of course, our new Nicholson. So, anyway, with that, these need to be inspected every four years. And we've been doing western, like I said, um, but now we're going to have to, Nicholson was done when it was, but we're gonna have to do, uh, Main and Fighter Avenue as well. So, they do, though the state has money in their bridge replacement program for, um, it's an eighty-twenty match to help with those expenses for cities to do these bridge inspections. So, what resolution twenty twenty dash two would do is basically allow us to apply for those funds. Um, the state has contracted with certain engineering companies that do these inspections. Um, they gave us a list of them, um, and what you gotta do is pick one of those consulting firms that you want to go with. They've, like I said, secured them already. They will, you know, once we pass this, they will employ their services for the city. They'll pay the bill a hundred percent, but then they'll bill us our twenty percent of it. Um, it's either do this, or we pay for all of it upfront ourselves.
What's it cost to inspect, is it called two thousand to make a bridge? Yeah, that's what.
That's what I think our last one was, right around in there. So, you know, maybe six thousand this year, have four years, it'll be eight thousand, yeah. Or more, as costs go up, but, um, no really any way around it. We do have to comply with this, so, like I said, this at least gives us some funding to get reimbursed a part of it.
So, that's two thousand, we pay twenty percent of that, is that what you're?
Right, whatever you got.
Per bridge, yeah.
Per. And we did designate, you'll see on the resolution, as pros engineering. They're the ones that have been doing western, so we just thought we'd stay with the same engineering company.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash two.
Thank you. Discussion? You're not? I vote? My name?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
See you?
Yes.
Flanzer?
Yes.
That's good, thanks, Teresa. All right, Deputy Ryan.
All right, thanks for that. After last month's report, I didn't think that things could get any, uh, more interesting here in Hartford, but of course they have. Um, this, this, uh, community's been through, of course, quite a bit in the last two weeks. And of course, we, we stand with the city of Hartford, uh, as a, uh, morgue. So, getting, uh, right to the Hartford Field Office thirty-day wrap-up, we had eighty-three traffic stops. That has increased, maybe because of the, um, the better weather. Twenty-nine civil paper services, eighteen follow-ups. I added that because as I was going through the calls for service, I realized how many, how many we had and just kind of, um, that I'd be missing on this report. That's the follow-up that we have to do in police work, and we, we just have so many calls for that, so we added that to it. Ten warrant services, three traffic accidents, uh, one vehicular hit-and-run, three disorderly subjects, six family disputes, four juvenile delinquencies, uh, one misdemeanor, one burglar alarm, burglary alarm, one actual burglary. Uh, three narcotics calls, one of them was at, uh, West Angles Schools. Fourteen medical calls, which is an increase of seven over last month. One DWI, one animal problem, one stolen vehicle, one stolen vehicle recovery, so that's positive story. Uh, six abandoned vehicles, two mental illnesses, and this is actually kind of a low number, the way dispatch, um, categorized that. This actually came from one person, and she, we visited her a lot more than two times. She's not Hartford anymore. So, good news. Uh, three suicidal subjects, uh, one of them was a, um, a juvenile attempt. Uh, one completed, uh, suicide, and of course, the vehicular, uh, homicide that we're, we've been talking about for a while. And yesterday, I get a call from, um, Casper at Wyoming TV asking for our assistance, um, to make contact with someone here in Hartford who had, um, phone contact with someone that they're looking for. They've, uh, were investigating, um, a murder, and, uh, that person has contacts here in Hartford. Uh, that person also has significant contacts in the Sioux Falls area. And, uh, we didn't realize that until we were about to get to the house. And then I asked, I called, uh, the sergeant back and I asked him, uh, when's the last time you pinged his phone? So, we ping the phone and say, you're missing, we want to know, trying to find out where you are. Uh, we can get with your cell phone company, we can ping your phone, kind of find out where you are roughly. When did you ping your phone last? And they said sixteen hours. I've done a lot of long-distance driving, but I could probably get to Casper, Wyoming in sixteen hours. So, that kind of intensified that particular call, because, so we ended up with six or seven deputies here, because he could have been here in Hartford. Uh, thankfully, he was, um, apprehended in Casper, but he just kind of adds to the, you gotta be kidding me. And things keep, uh, getting more, um, that can change, you know, I guess, here in Hartford. Total cost for service was two hundred and fifty-eight, an increase of fourteen in the last thirty days. Any questions? Usually have a great joke, well, maybe not so great, but it's been a rough couple of weeks. All right?
Yeah, we appreciate all of you doing.
Thank you.
For you and all the rescue teams, that's a, that's, that's a tough call too.
Yes.
With everything that's been going on.
Yeah, that's why we're here. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mitch, the engineer report.
Well, I didn't have anything specific then coming out. Um, any questions on the report?
No?
I didn't, we didn't have any action, I was, the only thing I had mentioned is we got plans complete for the Sioux extension. Uh, we're working with property owners here to finalize easements. So, once we have those, expecting that your next meeting, they're coming with a, a motion to advertise that right there. Shouldn't nail those down.
It's good, yeah, rainy season's coming up, so.
Yep.
Anything else when you want to picture report?
Um, slurry seal we'll be talking about here in a little bit. Um, equipment to maintain it is still down. Um, I got a price from RDO to pick it up, take it to their shop. Um, worst-case scenario that they threw out there, we're looking at about eighteen thousand, three parts and labor. Um, I did pull the tin off it today, took the valve cover off, just to do a visual inspection up top. I didn't see anything up there. I did have a buddy of mine that's a service technician for a company, been there for thirty years. He stopped over last night, we looked at it, um, did a couple of things. We're, I'm pretty sure it's in the head, that's what he has too, so, whether it's a valve or something like that, but it's gonna be brought in and taken apart and finalized, so.
Eighteen thousand?
Yep. So, but that's pretty extensive. They've got, uh, engine overhaul in it, and I already talked to the guy that came out. He was a salesman, trying to talk me into looking at a different piece of equipment. I said, we're not gonna rebuild it, so there's no blow-by on it. They said the bottom end still looks pretty good, or sounds good from all those tests we've done on it. I said, so I don't think it's gonna be that ex, to that extent, so. When they do get it and start tearing into it, I will stop over and check on it off and on to see what we got going on, so. So, that's where we're at with that. Like I said, we've done as much of that as we can do with what we've got.
Did you say eighteen thousand was for a complete rebuild, Craig?
Um, I've got the breakdown of it, um, engine overhaul, they got twenty-seven hundred for that. Um, cylinder head replaced, or rebuilt, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, hauling six hundred dollars, that's to and back. But if they, we get a run, we can drive it back in half an hour, I mean, it's made like, it's worth it, I paid to have it hauled back here. Um, then just a bunch of other miscellaneous stuff, I think even, uh, oil hills and just a lot of breakdown stuff.
Yeah, but I mean, eighteen thousand, that's the worst-case scenario.
That's what they're saying, yeah.
I mean, if it, if it's just got a burnt valve or something like that, I mean, you just recondition the head, put it back on, change the wheel.
Yep.
All good.
Yep, because I, as far as the turbo, I know there's some exhaust leaks wrong with the turbo, that would have to be fixed, something small, stuff like that, but.
They'll have it off anyway.
Yeah, yep, that'll all be taken off. So, the turbo's been, we're confined in it, so, I mean, shouldn't be anything with the turbo, so. So, worst case, this is happening.
I was just, for eighteen thousand bucks, you can pull that motor out completely, rebuild it, and put it back in.
I would think, yeah. So, that, I think they just put that together, hoping that way it'd be signed up, get it, or trade it off, so. So, we hold.
How old is that car?
Uh, ninety-six. And I can't tell you the hours on it, I had thirty bucks, so.
We should start talking about a new one now, and maybe we'll figure out what to buy in a year.
There's only a couple of choices, so.
The payloader.
Roads, roads doesn't need to be used to stop them.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's true too.
Works nice and hard for slower moving. So, that's where we're at with that. Um, like I said, I'll keep them top, but I'm gonna have them picked up now that, I just wanted to pull that head off, or that valve cover off, just to make sure there wasn't something broke up in top, so, did all that today. Um, but we'll get, get it all in tomorrow or this week sometime, so we get to start getting it taken care of. Uh, the only other thing I was gonna just mention in my report is, uh, scoreboards are in. Uh, Travis Electra got it wired today, so they're ready to go, because, uh, their two sides are gonna be back-to-backs. There's not a lot of room up there, so they put the pigtails in and got them done. Um, and we're, uh, as alter today, the fields are still froze pretty good. There might be a little slop on top where the weather is, but I think we're gonna put them up tomorrow. If we don't, I think we're gonna be without scoreboards for probably three, four weeks without wrecking the field, so, maybe longer. Does the frost come back in, though? So, we'll be getting those up tomorrow. Um, the only, the other thing on our report is the, uh, slurry seal bid, um, prices came in good. Uh, uh, I think it was.
Missouri?
Missouri, yeah, Missouri Petroleum, um, they've done work for us before. Um, we're going to low bid, we are gonna be low budget to make a motion to proceed with them. Sioux Falls hasn't, is, is, um, Thursday, their council has not approved yet, so I'd just like to make a motion to approve it contingent that they do, so.
Motion to approve Missouri Petroleum Products, uh, bid for slurry seal contingent on Sioux Falls and acceptance of same bid.
Bubba B is slur is, uh.
That's, uh, Nag Water.
Nag Water, yeah, okay.
And I'm getting prices on that and same with the price.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then, uh, the Street Association, uh, South Dakota Municipal Street Association meeting's coming up, April fifteenth and sixteenth in Rapid City. And I'd like to have Neil and myself attend that.
Just yourself, and you'll take the city car?
Yeah, me, myself, and Neil.
And Neil?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And that's all I have, unless somebody else something for me.
Will you be president next year since you're vice president this year?
Yep. And then I'm gonna step down, because retirement will be closer than what the next presidency will be.
Oh, great. Are you, are you and Neil ready to go?
Yeah.
I'm excited about your update on the naming rights of Turtle Creek, that's exciting. My dad was.
It's getting close. I think, it, it sounds pretty positive. I think she was actually, last time I talked to June, she was, um, even though this will be signed until July first, or their good bill or whatever for it, um, she was actually gonna get everything ready and send it up to the national level, so that if they approve it, we can just move with it, so.
Good.
And that, it sounds like Nashville will be okay with it, so, doing so. I was looking back at the minutes, or just at some stuff from last year. It's been well over a year now, we've been, that, we've been working on it, and I looked into it like three years before that, and the paperwork at that time was crazy, so.
Yeah.
I think it wasn't.
We're, we're close.
Yeah, good.
Crazy.
Hey, Craig, um, is the speed thing just on Main right now?
Um, that is actually, I believe, the sheriff's department. And we are gonna get ours out. I mentioned that even on Monday, I said we're gonna have to bring it down shop and get plugged in, get rid of it, so, it'll be out this week, we'll get that.
Well, that isn't ours then.
I believe that's the sheriff's department, yeah.
Have we identified if we need to add any additional lighting on South Main?
Um, down where that happened? There is a light right there.
I was thinking there was.
And I drove by it the other night just to verify, and it is on.
That's perfect, that's good, okay.
I did one morning also, there's three lights through that section.
Yeah, 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 I came in the other night.
It's not on the west side. They're only on the east side.
Yeah. And it might help if they put some LEDs in, it might get a little brighter, especially, you know, we could even request, uh, a little bit bigger light.
I don't think the problem was lighting.
No.
No. But, but it solved that problem.
Yeah, when he said the paper that it was dark, and I, I thought, I thought there's, so I did make a trip in town that night, just to make sure that it was lit up, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Karen, any other officer report?
Yeah, um, just wondering for the District Three meeting, I have to send in registration for that on Thursday of this week. So, is anyone planning on attending?
I was thinking about it, and I'm not going to go.
Okay.
What was that date, is it Thursday, the?
It is the nineteenth of March, Thursday, in Vermillion.
It is, we got a meeting Tuesday night, we got an equalization Wednesday night.
Yeah. It's a busy week.
Well, if you do have anything, please give it to Karen, she needs to know.
Yeah.
Is anybody else planning on going?
No.
Teresa, you going? Karen, you going?
I'm going.
I'm not, Jesse.
I think Jesse is going too.
Can I let you in tomorrow?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Just before Thursday noon.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, I'll let you in.
It's on Thursday afternoons.
See, there's a belt for forty-four hundred for NAPSLAM, is that just for the, for like poles that are out there currently?
That, yeah, the core poles and the wiring of those, yes.
They must be hauling some dirt off there.
Um, I guess I, I, somebody had said that there was some tracking up there, and I never got up there and checked.
Fair amount of it.
Was there?
Yeah.
I guess, Teresa mentioned to me yesterday, and I was gonna get up there and.
Just a contractor?
KP, everybody's got your turf? I'll stay on it. I know you would.
Anything else for Karen?
The only other thing I wanted to mention is, and an update on the election, um, the deadline to file petitions was last Friday. For Ward one, Mark Brenneman filed his petitions and no one else, so, congratulations, Mark. Ward two, there were no petitions filed. And Ward three, Levon Randall and Gail Olson-Duck both filed. So, we will be having an election this year.
You get to run an election.
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
There you go.
Yippee.
Look, is this, that, is it the first one? No.
Oh, in my, she first, first time round, it's not a couple, yeah.
All right, as I thought. And when's the election date? Do we have that set already? That's all, April?
April fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So, that's all I have.
Perfect. Anything else for Karen? Okay, and Teresa's report?
Um, the other thing I just wanna point out, um, in my report is, uh, job postings. We, of course, are advertising for the full-time, um, Chamberlain Economic Development Director. We actually got like twenty-two applications. Most of them have come from Indeed. We probably have got a handful that maybe would take a second look, so, so. We actually got like twenty-two applications, most of them have come from Indeed, we probably have got a handful that maybe we take a second look, so, so. Some good, some not so good, but, uh, but at least we're getting applicants for it, um, we are still also advertising for the full-time public works, um. We don't have a whole lot of great candidates on that one, so, no, so we will continue to advertise on that, so if you know of anybody, encourage them. And then of course we're advertising for our summer help too now, so we'll keep all them up until when.
What's our case scale on that full-time public works assistant?
Um, I've got that with me, I don't remember.
Fifteen to seventy, I think we're kinda talking.
I think it was up to twenty. It's, it's pretty broad range, like sixty to twenty or something in there, yeah. So, um, like I said, we'll continue to post those till we find viable candidates, um, just to give you a little update on our grant applications, of course, um. We've got the two FEMA grants, the generator and the storm shelter, those are both due by fifteenth of this month, so we're moving forward on getting those all completed and done, um. And just give you a heads up, um, the bike and retro committee met, I think about a week ago, um, they, if you remember at budget time, came and won and asked for funds to do their next phase of the trail, which would be. Along the creek going from um Turtle Creek Park to Main Avenue, um, we did, you know, budget funds for that, so they're looking into grants for that. Um, I gave them a couple of grant options, and I know they're out there, ones from the GFMP and ones through the state, the DOT. They decided they would want, they're gonna try and go for the South Dakota DOT grant at this point, um, basically cuz they have a. Pretty much a bigger pool of money and you usually get more funds awarded through that one, there's, there's more hoops to jump through, but usually can get more money than you can from the GFMP, so. That is going, that application is gonna be this fall, it'll be coming due, so just. Kinda let you know coming up, we will probably be looking at something for that, they'll be wanting to submit something for that grant, so, um, I'll keep you posted on that as we move forward. Um, that's, we're there, all I have at this time, we, we did sell our old boom truck out at auction and we got thirty-six hundred for it, and. Craig tells me we bought it way back when for only four thousand, so, not from two thousand and five, so we got our good use out of it. That was a good buy.
And it is leaving Thursday for Canada.
Of course.
Yeah, Canada.
They're hauling it.
Teresa, did we get the custom uh, some of our dirt stockpiled up there east of Central State sold?
I have about six people on the list, uh, um, some of it's being hauled right now, RMS has a chunk of it, um, NOLTS. Um, construction has some of it, um, Don Civerdin bought some of it, but I don't know if he started hauling any of his yet, so there's about four or six of them.
I hadn't seen anything, so I didn't know if I should call like nine-one-one, someone's stealing our dirt, or?
No. Say goodbye. Yeah, yeah.
Are they supposed to be hauling our dirt?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We know the people are out there hauling it right now, so yep.
Teresa's gonna keep me informed, so I, I work on that way to check meters, I can always, I keep.
No, I, I let them know.
One thing we, I've been talking to Jesse, that sewer that we're extending in there is up being pretty shallow, we might wanna keep a little bit in there just to build that line up for.
How much is a little bit?
Oh, I can get your number.
Just just one night, oh, I'm sure you, we, we've. We've got, we've probably got half of it yet still.
Okay.
From the original, it's not spoken for, so.
I'll punch in numbers.
Yeah, I'll do that, so I make sure. Alright.
Glad you brought that up though, I need to sell it all.
Right, exactly, yeah, because actually the, the NOLTS one, I just gotta call up a police go, so contractors are looking for it right now, so.
Yeah, we wanna have sewer in our shop, so.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else for Teresa? Alright, thank you everyone on the reports, we'll go down to new business, um, back to Teresa, we have some quotes in here for office.
So in your packet, basically I've got um three quotes on the office cleaning, I did try to look for somebody local to do the office cleaning, I, I had reached out to about. I got names from about five local people here, um. A couple of them don't do it anymore, I come to find out, and the other ones didn't wanna take on any more work, so then, um, after that, I reached out to Sioux Falls Companies, um. Like I said, three of them responded back, came out, looked at the area, and gave me the quotes that are in your packet, um, I had them quote for what we have now, basically, you know. Two weeks coming out, the vacuuming, the dusting of the common areas, the garbage of the bathrooms. So as you can see in the packet, um, Sioux Falls Commercial Cleaning is the lowest quote of it, um, all three of these are insured and bonded, um, I made sure I, you know, found that out, um. I guess my rec, and, and they all seem very accommodating, this, actually this little quote from Sioux Falls Commercial Cleaning, they Googled them west. Right across too, so they said they would just time it when they come out here, do them both at the same time, so I guess that would be my recommendation, you guys are good with that?
Are they doing it during your business hours here or after?
Well, she says they come out there and they, um, can't get in there till five o'clock, they don't want them to do it during business hours, I said I am fine if they wanna come at three-thirty, four o'clock here on Thursdays and do ours while we're here. I don't have any problem with that, I probably would prefer that, just.
Would be preferred, yeah.
Even though they are, you know.
Yeah, I don't have to worry about access and everything.
Right, exactly, we don't have to worry about giving them key and getting access, so.
Well, that's great.
Need a motion for that?
Yeah, I think it does.
I'd make a motion that we would accept the bid for Sioux Falls Commercial Cleaning for cleaning out the city hall offices.
Could you add in there during business hours?
During business hours.
Thank you.
Wait a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Alright. Water meters. Water meters, yeah.
I'm gonna start off, I'm trying to chime in when you want, so. So as you know, we're changing out our meter system, currently, we've been working on our Badger meter system, um, that's how we read the water meters each month. The guys go out with a laptop and they drive the town and, and that signal goes to this laptop and that tells us, you know, what's gone through everybody's meter. Well, that's getting to be kind of an outdated system, and, you know, we've talked about this at budget, we budgeted money, we are switching over to the Beacon system, which is a cellular system now. And, um, so everything, we won't have to drive around the laptop, everything will just be remotely, it'll read the meters constantly or whenever we want them, you know, like I said, it all works off the cellular tower, so. Uh, there's no need to drive around and we'll always get that information updated. Um, so we talked with, um, you know, the company for the switch over, we have all the software in place, we're actually working on it, we already have some meters switched out when we were doing the testing last year. We budgeted to get meters this year to start slowly converting the whole city over, we thought this would be like about a five, six-year conversion, you know, maybe four to six year. We do a few meters, budget a few meters every month and kinda spread off the cost, cuz it is costly. Um, but we are finding out now, we have been starting to have a few more, um, it's mainly software glitches that, um, have come up, um. Doesn't quite read some right, and what the problem is, is that our old Badger software is having some conflicts with Beacon who's running off of Windows ten, and we're having just some software glitches. And we've been able to, you know, call support and get through them, and everything's been working fine, you know, the last few months, but we've learned that in June, that software support's gonna be dropped. So, we go in the future, we might not be able to work off some of these, so. I think, you know, me and Craig and I have all talked, we need to be more aggressive in switching out these meters rather than just do, you know, a few. Each year, just as many as we can, hopefully maybe get it done in the next couple of years, kind of, couple, three years, so, um, we have to, right. This year, we budgeted, I think, fifty-five thousand dollars, and that gave us, what, two hundred meters?
Twenty meters, yeah.
And that gave us two hundred meters, so we could double or triple that, or, um, it would help. Like I said, you know, it, it, it'd be a lot of work on the guys, but I think, you know, as soon as we can get these switched over, the better.
Do you have a, do you have a record of which ones are working better than others, or is it?
Usually, usually I go out and read, I kinda do the same route, so like this last time, I deliberately ran the road I normally run, and then when I got done with, where I usually finished up, I wrote down that. Addresses that didn't read, and there's like three of them that were, that didn't read, but the problem is, like Teresa was saying, is the batteries were a fifteen to twenty year battery, they said twenty, but. Um, so that put us to twenty, twenty-six, but then actually we've got some that just got put in three years ago, two years ago, um. My end of it's still reading okay, as long as my, the other laptop doesn't go down, if that goes down, then we gotta buy a programmer for that, and that's. Fifteen hundred dollars for that, and then it's a hundred dollars a month fees on it, just to, to have the software for the, for that part of it. But the biggest problem right now is Rhonda's stuff is starting to crash together, so if we. If either one of those systems go down, it's gonna be, it's worse if hers goes down, if mine goes down, we can still spend the extra money and get, get it going again, but. Um, it's, if hers goes down, it's gonna be trying to get homeowners to read meters again, cuz we don't have the outside readouts or anything like that, so.
How many Badger meters do they have in town?
Right now, the ones that need to be changed out is one thousand thirty-one.
How many meters, that's total?
That's what's uh, total meters is like, um, I wanna say a thousand eighty-some or sixty-some?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, see I don't get the total anymore because I don't know what's out there for, we've got it all, we're down, Jess has got it all on his.
So let's, let's just say there's a thousand seventy-four of these Badger meters in town? And we budgeted how much to replace two hundred of them?
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five for two hundred, yeah.
Fifty-five thousand. So, five times fifty-five, quarter of a million bucks to replace them all.
I think we paid about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty the first time around we did it, um, and at that time, there was a. A promotional thing to get you going, you got somebody for, they think you have eighty-five meters if you bought the software and a bunch of other stuff, but. So what's left to change out is one thousand thirty-one is what we had left.
It's, it's a rare occasion that I hear Teresa say, hey, maybe we should do four hundred or six hundred.
Yeah, that is rare.
So that, that kinda stands out to me, but I don't know, I don't know, and maybe this council does, will just spend a quarter of a million bucks to, to replace all the meters, but I guess what I'm getting at. Is there a way to either find the bad ones or the old ones? Even if we replace half of them?
And that was our plan, is we, in two thousand and six, we replaced like uh six hundred and fifty meters in three months, so with that three-month period, them were the ones that we're gonna concentrate on. And then we were gonna, if we had some that weren't reading, that the batteries get weak, weren't reading on the route, they're on the top of the list to get replaced, so that was the original plan, which was working good until her software started acting up.
Did, do we have, if we looked into, do we have an original contract with them as far as how our support was gonna be and how much notice they're giving before pulling support?
I don't know, I know there's.
Well, we, we pay for support every year with the Badgers, not what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, I can't imagine, and I would have imagined that.
I mean, we're on a warranty.
We would have signed some sort of contract with them, um, and I would hope, I would wish that, that before they can pull support, that they're, that they give some sort of notice on it.
I don't think so.
Sounds like they are.
Yeah, June.
I think I said that.
June.
So if I'm reading correctly. Are you using two laptops, one that reads the new system and one that reads the old system, or are you?
Just one, just one laptop that reads everything prior to last year.
Yeah.
And then last year's stuff will.
So you have one laptop that's, and the issue with that is the software, as Microsoft, Windows ten specifically?
Well, mine is okay yet because I, that computer's, that's all that computer's used for, just reading meters.
So software in yours is compatible with both, you haven't had an issue?
I haven't had an issue on, on the, my side yet, no.
But in Rhonda's computer?
Right, that's, that's probably, cuz Rhonda's computer has two billing softwares, one of the Badger billing and one with the Beacon billing, and it's those two softwares that are. Finding little glitches, you know, working together.
What if we just got a standalone laptop with just the Badger software on it?
But you gotta dump it on.
And that's one thing I, me and Rhonda even talked, and so when she was on Windows seven, you had said, it's too bad we didn't have a computer just with Windows seven on it for the, that thing. I mean, eventually it's gonna crash anyway, you know, that system's gonna go down, Badger's gonna go up, whatever, but.
Buy a lot of laptops for fifty-five thousand though.
Yeah, but.
I don't think you can buy Windows seven anymore.
Yeah, but the thing is, you know, like.
I don't think you got support for Windows seven anymore, so Windows definitely goes down.
Yeah, when we were looking at phasing these out, we know that the batteries are gonna be going bad, and we, like I said, they're starting to go now, we're noticing a few more all the time. So we knew, that's why we started last year to get us into a system to get over, and we, all we gotta change is just, we don't change the whole base on the, when we go into a house, the base is still the same. We just put a different reader on top of it, so it's not like we're changing all the meters completely, we did that the first time around, we changed all the meters out. Um, so I mean, it's a quick fix on our part, if my laptop goes down, I do know of a couple of other towns that have the same system. So I could get theirs from them, use it, bring it back to them for, you know, for that day or whatever, so I, I've kinda covered on my side to a point, but. When, once the batteries start going dead, and then they're dead, I mean, I can't read them, so.
Sure.
Like I said, can I jump in, Travis, I wanna ask. Absolutely. Where did we, did we budget this out of the water or out of our general?
Out of the water.
Out of water?
Yes.
So how much money do we have in there?
Um, cash, we got about one point two million in reserves.
In the water?
Fund, yeah.
Okay.
So it'd have to come on, yeah, reserves, but.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if we're gonna do this deal. Do we rip the band-aid off or do we? Let it scab up?
Get some prices on it going down.
Correct.
And right now, we're having a little trouble even getting our order we put in.
I did talk to him today, um, ours will be here at the end of the month, our original order, and I asked him about availability for meters, because. The bird just bought two thousand within six months to change theirs out, um, a couple other towns in that, around that area just completely, so they completely wiped them out of meters, that happened. But he did say, cuz I told him what was going on, and I said, are we gonna go get the re, the radio, or the, the beacon system? And he said, yes, he said it is available now, we're up on back in capacity again, so, so it sounds like we'll be able to get them, it's just that, right now, ours were a back order, but we will have them by the end of March.
They're not made in China?
No.
So here's a, here's a dumb question. If you order them, do you pay for them when you order them, or do you pay for them when they come in?
I don't know.
If there's, if there's somewhere between nine and twelve month lead time on them. Then why don't we just order them and just pay for them as they come in, if that's the case?
Yeah, and that's what we do, we, we don't pay for them till we get them.
It's, it's not like we have to decide tonight to spend a quarter of a million bucks, order them, spend the money and then sit around and wait.
Yeah, and we don't wanna order any more than what we can keep putting in, because after six months, we start paying a dollar per meter fees. That's where we're talking about doing that read fee on the meters, um, because for every one we put in, we pay a dollar roughly, like, just less than, eighty-six cents or something like that.
What's it cost to have people go back to read it and call them?
Oh, it's expensive.
It's labor intense, because usually we're making remind you of all.
There's a lot of fences, a lot of dogs up there.
Is there a quantity buy?
And that's another thing I talked to him about, and he says if we are deciding, if we decide to really get aggressive this year, he said he'll talk to the factory and see if we can't get them in a deal on the other side.
Okay. Do we have that, that waterfall near marked for certain things at this point? Things that are in our CIP?
Well, we have projects coming up on the CIP.
I know, one point two thousand dollars of that.
No, I didn't squeeze that in there, but I know we had the water main extension to Turtle Creek, the water driven job, I'm sure we put in some cash in.
Can we reach out to these other communities and possibly do a group buy with them as well?
I don't think the factory will do that.
Won't do that.
I, I don't think so.
So we, we ordered two hundred for this year?
Yeah.
And we have a thousand and change left?
We'll have, after we get these two hundred, we'll have eight hundred and thirty-one left.
I'm gonna make a motion that we order another five hundred.
Uh, second for conversation.
Yeah. How long's it take you to put seven hundred of them in?
We did six hundred and fifty in three months, um, and that was. We did six hundred and fifty in three months, um, and that was scheduling them out and that stuff was the biggest thing. Um, but then when we did them back in oh-six, we actually went in, made sure everybody had a dual check valve. And everybody got their meter replaced if it was not a Badger, the plastic meter that we're using, so now it's. It takes longer to do the documentation, write down all the numbers, so we can get it for Rhonda, um, than it does to actually do the switch out. If, if we get in there, we can do a switch out in about twenty minutes, fifteen to twenty minutes.
Anyway, we got about, we got about three hundred at risk.
We've got two hundred coming, right, two hundred coming, another five hundred to be seven hundred.
If we, if we could get through seven hundred and you only have to worry about three hundred next year, or four hundred?
Yeah, and we see how things go and you let us know when you get these five hundred here and installed, that's gonna be a big deal.
Yeah, we'll get aggressive, I mean, we, we wanted to get, we got sixty uh, some pumps to get switched out here next month, so we wanted to make sure we saved enough. So we're only in the house once instead of going at a later date.
It's, it's just a number, it's just a random number. Other discussion, if you transpose some numbers, you could be getting your neighbors water bill and you could be getting yours.
Right.
How's that work, Brett?
I don't know.
I can't believe you guys.
All right, we got a motion and second, we need another discussion. Now we'll vote. Ian?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Herman? Keel?
Yes.
Slender?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
We'll get working on it.
Yeah, keep us updated.
Is that all right, Teresa?
Yeah.
And make it better.
We can, give them what we can and.
Gotta make a note of that.
One other thing, where you're just thinking on that, since like, if those other communities, friends, I know Minnesota, so I don't know if you reach out to them very often. But if they're switching off of the same system we got and they got a laptop and sell five hundred bucks, we'll take it.
Yeah, yeah, the systems are, like T's got it, um, Harrisburg, and I think there's a couple of other ones that I. Know that area that have, I definitely know T's got the same one and Harrisburg's got it. I'll be, and they'll probably, they're probably saying the same thing, so, cause I know they're in the same mode, well, everybody put it in about the same time.
All right, thank you. Ian, do we have anything for correspondence?
Oh, we got one more thing.
Oh, sorry about that, ordinance changes.
Yep.
Thank you. These are a good summary, Teresa. And I was kind of, you covered what you got for us.
So in your packet, um, like I said, I got a list of maybe possible ordinance changes, um, these are things that have come up. Either gotten complaints about, or come up discussion with the staff, or um, issues that have, you know, come to light over the last year. And so we've kind of been watching these, and we just wanna bring them before the council, just have just short discussion maybe on each one of them to see. If, that, you know, let you know what the issue is, or you know, what we see the problem being, and um, see what your thoughts are on if you think it's something that um. The city should be regulating, or maybe shouldn't be regulating, or you know, where you stand on it, we, we think. We want your input to see if we need to do any ordinance changes on any of these, so maybe if we can just quickly go through each one, get your input and. You know, if it's something you want us to look into further, I can come back with more information on the subject with it, but um. Like the first one is our city's sidewalk policy, and as you know, we have a sidewalk policy in place that we have passed and. Each year we go to each ward and we look at the sidewalks in that ward to see if they are deteriorating or. If there is a possible liability situation, um, if we identify a problem with it, you know. Um, we notify that property owner, say it's, you know, it's their liability, say, you know, here's a courtesy letter, we don't mandate that they do anything. But it lets them know that, you know, this is adjacent to your property and according to the staff, you're responsible. Well, when we were doing it this last year, where the ward we were in had several sidewalks that are over. Overgrown with like grass and debris, you, you didn't even know there was a sidewalk there on a couple of times, is there a sidewalk there, is there not? Crazy digging in, looking in, but um. Our criteria just has, you know, for cracks, whether it be horizontal, vertical, pooling water, spaldings, it isn't anything about overgrown vegetation and. We would like to add that to the criteria, because if, if there was ever a sidewalk there, it should be taken care of, it shouldn't have been lo, you know, let to be overgrown. So, does anybody have any issues with adding that to the criteria? Need to correct?
No, I don't think so.
All right, that's an easy one. Um, second one is burning the leaves within the city, if you remember, um, Brian, the fire chief brought this up um, last fall. I think it stemmed from a call they had with um, property owner. Burning a large quantity of leaves on their property, makes a lot of small, a lot of, you know, sparks, splinter. We currently don't have it in our ordinance to say anything about, you can't burn leaves, you know, we've talked, we did a change last year about hazardous materials. Whether it be tires or tin or pesticides, you know, anything that the DNR. It considers hazardous, that's in there, but we don't say anything about leaves, is this something we wanna add or not add? Do we think it's something we need to regulate?
I don't think it is.
I think you leave branches off.
Right.
I, I don't know why you wouldn't let somebody burn branches.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't think that produces as much good stuff as leaves.
Leaves and lawn clothes, I think are a non-starter, but.
Right, but branches, I think you can leave that out, yeah.
So add the leaves, not branches. Okay, so I'll come back with some more information on that again, uh, three, the, the blowing grass in the city streets. And we've had a few complaints about this, and when we do get a complaint, um, Brian, you know, goes out and looks at it, if. We don't have anything specific that says you can't blow grass into the city streets, but if he goes and looks at it and it's creating a nuisance, we can put in, you know. If it's being caught by water, you know, getting slimy, plugging up our gutter, you know, that's a nuisance and we can address it that way. If it's just grass in the streets, you know, we don't have anything that says you can't do that, um. More often than not, you know, people blow grass in the streets, the wind blows it away, or the traffic, um, I don't know if it's. A huge issue, but there are those incidents where it is, so is this, is this not a regulation, is it not something we wanna regulate?
How, how would you enforce that?
Well, like I said, complaints, it's usually the complaint driven, what we've had come in.
Buddy, I'm just trying to, cause if my neighbor were to turn me in for blowing grass clippings down into the street. And then Brian shows up and says, hey, we got a complaint, you need to clean this up or we're gonna find you, I'm gonna tell Brian that's not my grass. That came from up the street, the wind blew it around the corner and it, that's where it is.
The ones that we have problems with, it's pretty obvious, I mean, it's, you know, we've had some like up uh. Up on thirty-eight or whatever, it, I mean, it, it would take a small miracle for someone else to. Clean that grass out, so those are the ones we've had some problems with and, um, so, and it's looks.
It's one of those, you probably just keep wind blowing it to the road.
And then it just goes on.
It's not when you're.
And it looks trashy, makes town look crappy.
I think it's usually the commercial operators doing that.
Um, I won't say who's doing it, I'm just gonna say that. It happens and it, and it's, it happens enough times that it's an issue.
Hey Brian, I'm gonna throw myself under the bus here, uh, as far as, needless say, since I'm the only one on my street that has. Uh, curb and gutter, um, for twenty years, um, you know. The, the sweeper doesn't get there very often, and that's, I understand why. Um, but there's been many times where, where water's backing up, coming down my curb, okay? And, and so I literally just kinda take some of that debris on my curb, loosen it up. And, and move it out so the water can go through, and so I'm just, uh, you know. So there's been times where I admit I have actually, you know, loosened it a little bit and then got it away from the curb, and Tony's got something to say, lay it on me, buddy.
Well, I'm just gonna step up, um, first just want to say we run Badgers on our moors all the time. But, um, in a lot of the larger communities, um, I know Des Moines has a city ordinance against it, Minneapolis has a city ordinance against it. A lot of that is driven not, it's not driven as much primarily than the slot, um, or making it look bad. But environmentally, all those clippings going down, getting in the storm sewer, and breakdown releases phosphorus into the streams. Creates algae blooms and lakes, and that's where a lot of those other cities where it's being driven to not lock clippings onto the streets. Um, in our small community here, I still think it, I think it's a good ordinance to have, um. Mark, granted to you, it's a little bit difficult, could make it difficult for Brian to enforce, but to Brian's point, um. Highway thirty-eight, I happen to be doing one of our properties last year where. When we, that's one property, we dump bag and purposely make three passes to blow into the center of the property before we come back around. And a property owner across the street purposely started from their house through the super tall grass they had and kept mowing to the street. Until every clipping that was on their yard was completely thrown out on Highway thirty-eight. And I actually, when I finished up on our property, I went over there and I blew the stuff back off of thirty-eight and blew it back up on the boulevard. Because it was, it was a situation, if there were kids, if there were kids that cleaned out the street right on the right down along Highway thirty-eight. It was so bad that we could have had an accident with kids, we also could have had an accident with motorcycle, and that's the other side of it is clippings. Grass clippings on pavement is extremely dangerous for motorcyclists. And that's why I went and did what I did that day, because we have a lot of motorcycle traffic on that road, and really what I did is see somebody. Lay one down on Highway thirty-eight, thirty-five miles an hour, so I support this ordinance as a member of the Longmont community. Lobby, Longmont lobby, Longmont lobby.
All right, any direction for Teresa?
I like it, you see, you see on party as well.
I'd like to see more of it.
I mean, of all these.
Yeah, we're gonna review it.
If you guys give me a direction, you know, I'll put something into an ordinance and, and you'll review that actually before any final. Motion or action is taken.
Okay.
I'm just looking for some direction.
One thing I see where this could be kind of a, could be a headache eventually, because if you're mowing, wind blowing, it blows it out there. You're not intentionally doing it, how much is okay, how much is not okay?
That's very detailed.
You know, so you could, it could open up a lot of complaints.
I wonder if the city does this?
Oh, no, no. We got, we got rear discharge mowers.
My, my, my initial thought is that this is gonna open a can of worms.
You know, it's kinda like on the bike trail, we had the complaint last year, you know, we didn't intentionally do it, because ours are rear discharge, or they're mulching. Except for the one by the pool, which is a Badger, so you, he's mowing, if it's windy, it's gonna blow up on there, you don't get the complaint about it. So I mean, it could, you could end up a world of complaints on something.
I think it's gonna open up a can of worms.
What's deal is it then?
Yeah.
Just, just cause we approve it doesn't mean it's forever. It's like the dump, like the, you know, the grass clipping dump, it's not forever.
I think it's one of those, I think it's gonna be into the details on this, and it's worth, it's probably still going to be complaint driven. I mean, I doubt we're driving around looking for pieces of grass on the street, you know, it's gonna be the obvious pieces. And, and complaint driven, so.
Well, if it's illegal to cut your grass and blow it in the streets, then that's when I'm gonna be an outlaw.
What are you in for?
All right, we'll keep moving, we got, we'll keep my open for Tony to come around and blow it back into my yard.
Oh, no, we got not mowing grass in undeveloped areas.
So the next one has to do with grass as well, uh, and Brian kind of brought this to me, so we have several. Undeveloped properties within town, you know, in our new housing developments, there's quite a few of them, um. Every year we send out at the beginning of, in the spring, beginning of the mowing season, to the developers in town saying, you know. City has an ordinance, you need to keep your grass sprayed, cut, you know, you need to control, you, you are within the city and you do have residence. You know, a lot of them are getting residence within these developments and claims, so we do send out reminder letters to them every year, it's always a struggle. With Brian to get him to comply, um, they're always kinda fighting that, he has suggested, you know, if our normal procedure. Um, basically with any code violation is they get, you know, the warning letter, you know, courtesy letter, give them to comply. First violation, they'll get a fifty dollar fine, second violation, you know, be a hundred dollar fine, and then third, it'll go to the city attorney, so. Um, Brian.
What's the timeframe?
Grass is five days.
Five days?
Yes.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of raising the fines and shortening the period of time.
Yeah, so Brian is suggesting for on the undeveloped areas with the developers, raising that fifty dollars that first fine to a higher amount. Hopefully with an incentive that they will comply.
But I think you go from, I think you go from five days to.
Brian can mainly sneak a little bit more to this, but I think you've gotten. Some of the developers saying the problem is that they can't find anybody to mow it.
Enough for like a month, and you get a letter, and it says you got two days to mow it, I think you'd be out there mowing in the rain. Cause you didn't mow it the four weeks prior to that, but I'm just saying.
Were we running into some of the issues with some of the undeveloped stuff, besides that is, is that. We do a first courtesy letter, we give a week, and I, I give them a couple of days more than that, so it, they probably get seven days or so. And then you're sent on a second letter with fifty dollar fines, and then a third letter, obviously you get three days. Well, for some of the undeveloped properties, um, the cost of mow that property is probably seven, eight hundred dollars. If you can by screening us out through three letters, pay a hundred and fifty dollars versus.
Right.
I think, uh, you know, that's a little bit of the situation where I have to, I, I, I haven't had anybody say they couldn't find someone to mow it for them.
Oh, I thought Chris was saying they were having a trouble lining.
No, when, when Bush comes to shop, there's, there is, there's a mower, so.
But.
That's kinda, I think, has, has an issue in some cases, is, is that, uh, they don't, not see them.
I know the Georgia property owners for that property specifically don't appreciate all the thistles either.
And that's what usually complaints we get, you know, people build, they pay a lot of money to put in a new lawn and whatnot, and then they got. Thistles growing next to where other weeds that are blowing into their yards.
I understand that.
Yeah, so.
So that's kinda where the incentive for the change in the, but it puts a massive amount of weight in fines, Teresa.
Two hundred and fifty per ordinance?
Thank you, Brian.
I think we oughta come right out and gate with two fifty. Yeah, I think we oughta shorten it to five days, but that's just me.
Well, I can put something together that will state that undeveloped would be two fifty, so, okay, we'll do that. Um, the next one is, um. Possibly enacting a rental housing permit, and um, Brian once again brought this my attention, when we were. Having our issues with one of the tenants here in town down the street, um, when. Trying to get um, renters to comply with our ordinance, a lot of time renters aren't vested in the property, and so when we send them. A letter to, you know, comply with this or that, usually a lot of times it gets ignored. With rental property, we do send the letter to the renter and owner of the property, um, we thought with maybe enacting. A rental housing permit, this would give the owners a little more incentive to comply as well and to get on their renters. Um, Sioux Falls has this, and what it is, is, is an application form that if anybody rents out any property, that they have to actually. Apply for a permit with the city to be able to rent out their property, city would issue them a permit, um. It gives us the ability that if we are having troubles with that property, we can pull their renter's license and they're not able to. Anymore in essence, I mean, the, the biggest problem I can see with this, it's gonna be. Hard to get people in here to register their rental property, I mean, obviously we know the apartments are rental properties, but if somebody's renting out their house. A lot of times we may not know if they're renting it out or not, so getting them to comply with the permit, and then if there is a violation. Yeah, we can pull the permit, but then you're still going to court to follow up on that, which you would be doing for the code violation as well, so. Um, maybe a tool we can use, maybe not, Brian talked a little bit more, so.
Doesn't necessarily quite rent my property though, don't you know that I'm the owner and a renter is paying the water bill?
Yeah, most of the time, sometimes people don't disclose that when they sign up their spol stuff, yeah. Sometimes people don't disclose that when they sign up, they're supposed to, yeah.
Um, where I'm looking at with this is with the rental registration, I think we can identify the majority of the people in town that are, that are doing those rentals. I also think we can, you know, incentivize as far as through our newsletter or whatever that you need to do it because I would make it mandatory, I wouldn't make it a voluntary thing. And I think some other programs that maybe happen were voluntary with other stuff. Make it mandatory and they would know that, you know, if I get the, if I get code violations, first thing I'm gonna look and, you know, and see is, is do you have it, have it registered? Um, the way I would look at using it is, is our normal ordinance saying the way it works now, the, you know, we send out the first letter and then fifty dollar fine, a hundred dollar fine. Then I would, my next letter, my third letter, I guess, would be saying we may potentially pull your rental registration. I think that thread in ninety-nine point nine percent of the ones that I run into is gonna be enough for us to get good things done. At the last code enforcement meeting in May, I visited with Matt Tobias about it and said, doesn't work. And he said, absolutely, works well for us in Sioux Falls.
I'm supportive of some information on it.
You don't have a draft of, of letters one, two, and three, do you, by chance?
Um, I certainly have it on the computer, yeah.
That you, that Sioux Falls uses or?
Oh, as far as like Sioux Falls uses?
No, I'm, I'm basically, what I'm getting at is, is I, I personally kind of like to see the verbiage of letters one, two, and three, so we have a better understanding in case we get a call. Maybe I'm missing something, but, but if I, if I'm understanding correctly, letters one, two, and three for a rental housing permit do not exist, is that correct or am I wrong?
Um, they send out, Sioux Falls sends out letters just like we do to start with. Um, you know, I send out the first letter first since if it's a junk, junk situation, I'll send them a letter from, you know, we've had a complaint, um, your house, you know, your property is in violation. And then we always put the ordinance in the letter so they know what ordinance pertains and we give them a date to, to clean it up. The second layer would, if they don't do that, it'd be a fifty dollar fine with another date, and then the third letter is a hundred dollar fine.
Okay.
And then in that third letter, I put the hundred dollar fine. Down in the lower part of that, I would say if you do not comply with this, we may potentially.
So the template does exist?
Yeah, I have it, I have it.
I've never seen it before, I just kind of curious. Okay.
I got a question for Tom, I guess. In something like this, is there a way to make the landlord responsible for any cleanup fees or associated costs?
If they, they didn't have to get the notice at, at the same time that the renter, sure.
I'm just thinking all out, Travis, I think owns a rental property and if he got a letter saying there's gonna be a cleanup and if the tenant don't pay it or don't get fixed, you're gonna have to pay the bill.
Right.
The landlord's gonna go knock down the door and say, clean your stuff up.
Right.
You know, or get out.
And that's what we do.
And then they'll put stuff in their own lease that says, I mean, they'll just surpass them a buck, but then it gets a little bit extra pressure on the landlord.
And this is just a good way to be able to track who's.
That too.
Who's who and, and all of this, so.
Cause that does become an issue sometimes trying to track.
Oh, I know.
Where the owner is of the property.
Somebody don't pay me, make a rent, so I don't figure out who the landlord is.
And I, and I have had some owners say, why, I'm gonna have to wait, so.
Yeah, I would say with this, I'll see some of that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll put something together, kind of go. Over what Sioux Falls' application is and kind of do a little more information on that. Uh, next one's about pet licensing. And we got a complaint last month about, you know, he was, you're supposed to license your pet every year, you know. He was late in licensing it, I want to know why we don't send out reminder letters. Well, basically, it's because every single pet has a different, they're good for a year from when you license it. So every single pet has a different expiration date on it and it's just very time consuming and passary. Anyway, it all boiled down to, you know, after that came in, we got to start talking about our annual licensing and how we have a very, probably a small percentage of actual pets that are licensed within the city and what could we do to get people to come in and license their pet? I think that's the whole goal is to get, you know, the pet license off. There is an incident, we know who the pet is, who they belong to and. So I know Andy with the Sioux Falls Humane Society says that there are a few towns around that instead of doing an annual license, do like a lifetime, a license for the life of the pet. So basically, you get a pet, you come and you license it once for the lifetime of that pet. You don't have to remember to come in annually, you got all their owner's information when they initially license it. You know, we probably want to charge a higher fee because, you know, you don't have to come back every year to license it. The only thing that we wouldn't have control of if we do that is we wouldn't be able to ensure that that pet is always up to date on their vaccinations and the rabies. But I don't know if that's something that the city has to be concerned with. To me, that's the pet owner's responsibility if there's an incident. Food for thought, do we want to keep doing annual license or do, should I look into maybe doing a lifetime license? We might, since they only got to come in once, maybe we can put a hard drive to get people to come in and do that once, you know, a lifetime long, we can get more people to register their pets versus now.
How much money do we generate annually on pet licenses?
Do you know how many are licensed?
Not very much.
I bet we license around two hundred and fifty animals and that's kind of a guess.
Wow.
I didn't make, for the whole city. And they're between five and ten dollars, you know, whether they're spayed or neutered, even say five bucks a piece. So it's not a lot of revenue.
That's case scenario of twenty-five or something.
Yeah.
The registration part of it, the, the primary purpose is so we get a lost pet or somebody gets bit by
Right.
a pet that they don't know whose it is and they have no idea.
Exactly.
So we're able to track it down on the humane society.
I think, I think that's the whole purpose of being on licensing, yeah.
I, I would be really curious to see if you waived the fee, whether your pet registrations went up, if you just sold it as a way for people to get their dog back if the city comes in contact with it.
I don't think it's a fee, I think it's just a simple, it's just a reminder of actually going out and doing it. I don't think a five dollar challenge, I don't think that is something.
That's not a large fee.
Anybody.
I wonder how many things come to our attention after one citizen complains. Cause the first sense of this is like, wow, one person came in. Over all the years I've looked for, this has never been an issue, so.
Oh, it's always been an issue. We're just talking more, we just heard that it's like, you know, he wants us to send out yearly reminders or he wants us to stamp the expiration date. It's like, you know, for like you said, a five dollar pet license, we can't even get people to come in even here to do it. So that, it started really the conversation.
Probably more the licenses come from the vet, don't they?
No, not the city license.
I, I wanna, I wanna address what Brady said because Brady said it's not the money. It, it's not five or ten bucks, but the way we're doing it right now, you have to prove rabies. So in order to prove rabies, in order to spend that ten bucks, you have to spend eighty bucks to spend the ten. So it's not ten dollars, it's ninety bucks. So, so I, I do, I think it is the money.
Well, I got a question, how many do we register when the, do the women of today still do their deal? How many do we register at that deal?
We have a register with us now, do, but it feels, is that average of two fifty, two hundred and fifty?
But at their one day deal, how many do they usually, cause she gives a deal on shots. Does women of today, they still do that?
Yeah, they do. And we don't attend that anymore.
You, you did it one time.
We did it one time, yeah, but the.
Yeah, I'm.
But then she stopped registering them completely, the, up at the, the clinic, and so we do it all down here now. But even when she was probably, I don't know, a hundred and fifty, maybe, I mean, yeah, something like that.
If we're gonna register at all, I think I'm a huge proponent of the lifetime because I, I do think it's the time, I think it's the, I'm like, you're during business hours. I'm, so I don't get, oh, and I miss the thing on a Saturday, oops, and, uh, yeah, maybe I'll do it another year. You know, like it, and it does, I don't even think, a lot of people even think about it.
Yeah.
I think we could have Greg register and while he's putting meters in.
Thank.
I think we can, I think we can take care of a couple of things. What do you think of that? I'm thinking outside the box.
Well, I mean, seven, seven hundred meters.
That's probably fourteen hundred pets, cause there's a couple of pets in each one of them.
That's seven thousand bucks. We, you know, we, meters, we can buy with that one?
I, yeah.
What do you think, Tony?
First off, the situation of everybody's expires on a different time. I think that's really simple to fix, you buy an annual license, license is gonna do first of January, whatever, rather than, we moved to town on April seventeenth, so we were, came down to a pet license on April eighteenth, and I gotta remember the next year, April eighteenth is when his license expires. If you just did an annual, which is what Sioux Falls does, is an annual license.
We used to do that? And then we had a complaint that somebody would come like a month before the annual license was due and they'd have to pay it twice, and had complaints about that. So that generated the change to, it's good for a year.
Okay, so.
We worry about.
Couldn't prorate it.
Huh?
You could, you could prorate it.
You could, our ordinance still allows it.
I'll prorate it five bucks.
How'd you round prorate five?
So we get two hundred and fifty dollars license in town and we just had the girls tell us that ninety-one people said they wanted a doghouse or dog park. We're talking about spending money on a dog park and we only got two hundred and fifty pets licensed in town. You're gonna build a dog park and you wanna get your pet licenses up. If you wanna go in the gate at the dog park, you gotta have a dog license on your dog before you go on the dog park.
No doubt about that.
And my conservative government over has a dog. They gotta be licensed, and after you city license, gotta be somebody's license. But if you open, if, if you have, if you have city licenses required by ordinance that your pet is supposed to be licensed in the city and you build a dog park on the city park and you let anybody in there without a license that lives in town and they don't have a license, I mean, if they come from Sioux Falls and they have a city license, great, they have a city license in Sioux Falls. But you just, you just allow people to use that breaking an ordinance. It's like saying you're supposed to have a license plate on your car, but if you doubt that's all right, you go ahead and drive down the street anyway. I mean, I think it, it makes perfect sense on, on, alongside of rabies vaccinations, if you're gonna, if we're gonna build a dog park and you need to be licensed and you have to have rabies vaccination to be licensed, that makes sure that we get dogs playing in the park that have had their vaccinations and got it on. So if you have the license and vaccination is required and license required in the park, you're less safer for dogs that are in there, so just, I'm gonna put a little bit of my thoughts around that.
I agree with all of that, just now how do we monitor that?
Right.
So, somebody sit there with.
Let's pay.
I mean, I, I'm just making.
It's an issue more than a notification.
Right.
Or you just put it aside enough, it's.
This is no different than any ordinance we have. Those that wanna buy and buy it well, those that don't, we'll plead your rights. It's any law, any ordinance, it's there to keep the honest people honest.
I'm kind of surprised that was number six on the list, I could have been farther out.
These aren't in any. Um, Rhonda was, we gonna reach out to other communities to see who possibly have this and what they charge or whatnot? I gather some more information on this and we can kind of revisit if that sounds like a plan.
It'll all change when we get a dog park too.
And I, and I could, so, okay. And the last one, I kind of discussed about this generated from complaints we've had over the last winter about people pushing snow either into the city streets or onto their neighboring property across the street and down to somebody else's property or adjoining to them. Is this something we want to regulate right now? We do not have any ordinance in place that addresses that.
Regularly going into the street, I don't wanna get into the neighbors' issues, they can figure that out themselves.
Where this is, a lot of that's coming from is, um, we're pushing it up and it happens to be on the downhill side or near the driveway. So when you come by and plow and you're filling your driveway and then it's all snow that came out of the neighbor's driveway. They'll push it up and they, with a pickup plow, they can't get it up over the curb, so they just push it to that point and stop. Like I said, when we come by and plow, we end up filling the driveways with it. And so we're getting, we're getting people talking to us about, you know, complaining about their neighbors. They're like, well, can we do something while my neighbor pushing snow up there? And so we have nothing in ordinance about it, so that's why we kind of brought this up.
So when they're doing it, they're pushing it on the street?
They're pushing it through the street, out of the boulevard adjacent to them.
And I had a complaint of another one that pushed the snow from their driveway all across, across the, the street onto the people across from them, up onto their boulevard, and then it went into their sidewalk. So then they had to scoop it off of their sidewalk, the snow from the people across the street from them.
Wow, that's good.
And I mean, it's all gonna boil down to two that, you know, we talked about this summer about water too, you know, running onto neighboring properties with the sun pumps and everything. You know, there, there is state law out there about, you know, you can't put, you know, push your own water onto other neighboring properties. So we don't have anything in our ordinance about that, the snow or anything. Is this something we need to regulate or is it between property owners?
How many complaints did we get about this?
Well, I had the one about up in Opalane about pushing it across.
I had about three, I think, more.
I get about half a dozen or so.
Ten, ten complaints of a city of three thousand people. People pushing snow on other people.
At what point do you say the best government is better?
That's just it, is this something we need to regulate or is it between property owners?
If, every time one of these issues gets brought up, I immediately go to the city. Because if I can't push my snow from A to B, the city comes by and pushes their snow, you know what I mean? Craig's dragging snow for a block and puts it in my driveway and then I, then I have to put it in my yard? And then when they go clean out intersections, right after I do my drive, or my sidewalk, they come in with a, with a ski loader and put a mound of it on the end of my sidewalk and then I'm done doing my sidewalk until they come and remove it. I mean, it's gotta go somewhere. And everybody's got their fair share. You know, nobody complains when we have bad winters and we have to rent a blower and go up on RT or wherever that was and blow those people out. And where, where are you blowing that? You know what I mean, you're blowing it to somebody else. But it's, everybody has their share.
I wish the city's not dumping their share on my. I wish that guy, I wish that guy that drives the maintainer who sits there and waits until I get my sidewalk done and then comes and runs all the snow back up the sidewalk. Not gonna mention any names, asking for a friend.
I don't know what you're talking about.
But what about people that blow their snow into the street?
We, if we, that we have, that we have.
If they, they could do it before we plow, but after we plow, they're not, it's anywhere.
In the ordinance, they can do it before the plows come through, but not after, yeah. That is an ordinance.
So we're not talking about that, right?
So, so the ordinance right now says that I can, I can move my snow from my driveway into the street and then Craig can come by with the maintainer or the, the plow and take it and put it in my neighbor's driveway. So we, we can do that. But if I, but if I take my plow truck and I start in my garage and I go down my driveway and put it in on Deb's, well, it's the city, right, boulevard.
Deb's?
Then we're gonna write an ordinance that says I can't do that because that might melt and be water in her backyard. But then what I do is I leave there, then I go do it first and I push it across the street. And Craig says I can't jump the curb, but I can with the plow. But then that narrows up the street, which doesn't really matter because in Hartford, the streets get ten foot narrower in the winter time anyway.
All right, we're gonna stop.
Okay.
Nope, we're gonna stop.
Okay.
Does anybody want anything on this?
I, I would just, it's one of those situations that I run into.
No, I don't think so. Does anybody want an ordinance on this?
No.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
That's all I need to talk about. That's all I need to talk about, there'll be some more in the future, but that's your input.
Enough, so.
Alright, and then you got those changes in the future, you wanna talk about those at our future?
We'll talk about them in the future.
Alright. Check now, when you're looking for a motion going against a decision for legal and personnel. Motion, my answer, second from?
Nelson.
I answered, I say.
Oh, you never said that, I didn't hear you. Did you say?
Yes, I did.
I was like, hey, my ear's full of this.
All good, all good.
Ready?
Alright.
I'd like to make a motion that we transfer Track One of the Hyden property from the city of Hartford to the Hartford Area Development Foundation.
Second. The motion, second, in discussion? A vote? Keel?
Yes.
Blinder?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I would also like to make a motion to authorize, uh, the mayor, Jeremy Manning, to sign any paperwork for Project Blackbird.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Vote? Mine?
Yeah.
Herman?
Yeah.
Blinder?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
I think the motion would be Jeremy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the polls.